Fall with me, please. Heavenly Father, we consider it a privilege to be here. We ask for your guidance so that the things that we say and do will bring you glory and honor. Father, we ask your blessings upon our staff, our students, our faculty, everybody that touches the life of another, we ask for your blessings. Father, on this meeting, let it be done decent and in order, and at the end of the day, we know that we have done, everything that we have done has been pleasing to you. We love you, Lord, and most importantly, you love us. These blessings we ask and receive in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One state under God, one in indivisibility.
We have a quorum present, and you should be aware, it's usually on the agenda as well, that these meetings are not only recorded, but they're available for people who do watch and pay attention. Occasionally, I'll get a comment from someone about, "Did you really say that at the board meeting?" I said, "I never, never envisioned for a moment that you would be one watching those." First item is to consider approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled board meeting from February 29th. Is there a motion?
So who?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Next item is opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics to the board. May I take just a moment of personal privilege to identify a couple of members of the public that are present with us today? Mr. Yunopoulos doesn't wear a tie much anymore, and since he had one on today, he thought he would come and sit in the back. Thank you, sir, for being here. God bless you. Anyone have a comment? I wasn't offering him that option. Hearing none, seeing none, we come now to the chancellor's report.
Okay. I'm gonna take a little liberty here. One of the items I wanted to update you on, I did not get on the agenda, but I'm going to ask Valerie Paeton to come forward and just give a real quick update on the events for this upcoming eclipse, because the next time you meet, it will be past that date, so...
Yes, good afternoon. I'm real, we are really excited about the eclipse events that are going to take place here, starting on Thursday. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we'll have shows that are gonna be featured at the Planetarium. On Saturday, we are going to have Dinner Under the Stars, that the foundation is going to be having a fundraiser for that activity. We're sold out for that event. We have approximately 120 guests. Kathryn Winston and her staff are doing an amazing job with the entire event. Monday, we're gonna have Channel Six out here doing live broadcast from the Planetarium the entire day, and we have vendors scheduled to come, we have food trucks, we have a stage, like an exhibit stage, we have speakers from NASA, we have Warren, our astronomer, is going to be doing a star exhibit, like an, just an overview of the stars. So, like I said, they are doing a phenomenal job in getting all of that prepared and for all of the guests to come out and see our campus. So people are traveling all over the country to come and see what we have here in central Texas, so we're delighted that they're gonna be able to be on our campus and participate in this extraordinary event.
Anybody questions, comments?
Thanks for your hard work.
Yes.
All right, next, just a couple of items for your calendar, and you will receive more information following this meeting, but just so you can get it on your calendars today, we will host a faculty appreciation dinner on Thursday, April 25th, at 5:00 PM here in the campus center. Also, there's a four technicians of tomorrow graduation scheduled for Tuesday, April 9th, at 10:00 AM. I know that many of you like to support those events, so... And next, we have Dr. Garrett with the SACS EOC compliance document submission.
Good afternoon. Thank y'all so much for giving me the opportunity to give you an update. I'm pleased to announce that our 2025, I know we're only in 2024, but our 2025 compliance document for SACS reaffirmation was submitted three days before the due date. It was due March 1st, and we were able to get it done. This was not an easy task. There were 14 teams that worked for over a year on writing this document that was over 500 pages with over 1,000 attachments. It was reviewed by these 14 teams also, as well as additional other people, and put into a website by our own webmaster, Erica Burton, and we got it uploaded in time. What that brings us to is toward the end of April, around April 23rd, the team from SACS will be reviewing that offsite, they review it, and then we will get feedback and any questions that they have based on the compliance report. And by the way, there's like 72, 72 standards that we had to write to. So if there's any questions on those 72 standards, they will give it, give those to me, we will write what's called a focused report and have to get that into them in July. The visit will happen here in October, and they will be on campus October 6th through the 10th. But prior to that, either over the summer or in September, they'll be visiting some of our locations around the United States. They've chosen Fort Knox, Fort Johnson, Fort Greg Adams, and Fort Moore to visit. And then while they're here, they will visit obviously our campus, October, on October 6th through 10th, but they will visit Copper's Cove High School, Parker Heights High School, and Fort Cavazos, with one more location to be determined that they want to visit. So I'm excited that we got our compliance reports submitted. That was, that was a lot of work, and I can't thank the team that worked on that enough. Thank you.
Comments, questions?
Just a question. Dr. Garrett, sometime between now and, well, close to October, because we're all old and our memories won't last too long, so will you talk to us about what to expect and the things that we might be asked?
Thank you for bringing that up, because yes, they will wanna speak to some board members, and, and I appreciate you reminding me of that, and yes, I will brief you on, on some of the items, we'll talk about that ahead of time, definitely.
You'll give us a copy of the right answers?
Off the record, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Next item is to discuss and consider approval of February 24, 2024 interim financial statement and investment report.
Okay. February in terms comparable to this time last year, you will see a decrease in cash, but that's offset by an increase in investments. Receivables are down, that's related to PEL, state appropriations, and military payments. In your prepaid expense line item, you'll see an increase there, that's related to the cost of insurance that, that we dealt with three or four months ago. In your unearned revenue line item, down in your liabilities, you'll see an increase there, that's state appropriations. Last year, we knew what we were gonna get with state appropriations, so we set up a receivable for the amount that we hadn't received. This year, we're getting it in advance, so we're deferring it to the appropriate period. So, next page, in your revenues at the top, your difference is there, our grant funds received last year, the Aviation Jones donation received last year, and then damage, insurance damage check that was received. And down in your non-operating revenues, there are some increases there over last year. The, the good one is investment income, the other one is PEL, and this could be just a timing issue between this year and last year. So, on your investments from the previous month, we've had two CDs mature, and we've moved those down into some government agency securities.
Any questions?
Rates are starting to inch down a little bit.
Any questions?
He, he kinda touched on it, I did have a question about the earned revenues. Is there anything else that, that's bottled into that?
Yes, tuition. Every, every month, we, I run a report that shows me revenue, like for the spring, that should be spread out over March, April, May. So if I, I can't record it all now, because it will, it will overinflate your, your revenue.
Yes.
So I spread that out over the, over the term.
Okay. Because that was, that was the biggest question, because I knew it was, it was more than, than what we were coming in from the state, so I was just like, okay, where is this coming from?
Four million of that is from the state that we just received. We should have received seven million in October.
Yes.
We just received three million, and that'll be spread over three months, and then we'll see another, another three million in June.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to accept this report? Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is Mr. Gonzalez, option year on Great Western.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I am seeking board approval to exercise the fourth option year of the Great Western Dining Contract with an end date of August 31st, 2025. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. You have another item?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon again. I'm seeking board approval, and this is regarding the, the room rates for the residence hall, and that is to adjust the rates for the effective fiscal year 2425 for fall and spring semesters, single occupancy room to $3,600, double occupancy room to $3,090, and for our summer rates, $2,280 for a single occupancy, and for a summer double occupancy, $2,080. Sorry, I was a bit of a tongue twister.
Questions? Comments? Is there a motion?
I'm happy to answer questions.
Motion to approve these rates?
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolin?
It was a little earlier this time, so I was surprised like it was me, the person that goes next. Okay, so I'm here to request, or request to the board to consider approval for the increase in flight fees for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, as presented during the board workshop on March 19, 2024.
You've had time to think about these numbers and this recommendation. Any questions?
I have a question. Will this improve the program, or is this just to, will the program still have the backlog that it still has, or?
The improvement is focused on being able to keep up with the cost of price, of cost of parts.
So it's just the price, it, it's not gonna make the program more efficient?
We are focusing on basically making the staff changes that we need to be able to make the program more efficient, so, such as a mechanic that we talked about before. We recently, or not recently, but a year ago, we did a change from part-time to full-time instructors, which was meant to also increase that efficiency, obviously, that was an additional cost that...
Just currently, how many students are waiting to get into this program?
I literally, I actually just contacted our, or the students that were interested for the summer semester, we, I had 20 replies for the summer semester, and, which typically is a small semester, and we don't get as much interest, so we expect to have even a bigger interest for the fall semester. So I would expect about an additional 10 more to be interested in the fall.
So with the improvements that were made, we were, we are able to incorporate 10 more?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, will that make the waitlist?
Well, it's, it's not a waitlist, it's a competitive enrollment, but that idea is to explore, to grow as a program as well, so we are trying to also increase the number of instructors that we have till we can start helping the students that are having, waiting for a while. It's, it's a matter of how many seats we can have in a given semester that is gonna allow more students or not, so if we add more staff, then we can allow more people in.
And the fees, and the fees are in line with other programs?
Yes. Yeah, we're still on the affordable side. Yes, 100%.
And you say it's a competitive enrollment, explain, please.
So we make sure that, or we analyze each student, each applicant, we think that a waiting list was not fair for people who, if you were in a waiting list for a while, then, you know, you've been waiting for more time and, or, let's, let's put it this way. So if I have a person who is interested in the summer semester, that person has less chance of making it to the summer than the person who came in maybe four months ago. So if you're towards the end of the list, then your chances of being able to be part of the program are very small.
So it's based on...
They provide an essay, they come and talk to us in person, they tour the program, we explain to them all the challenges, all the good things about the program. We try to really coach them to make sure that they understand what they're gonna get into. It is a program that requires a lot of time, a lot of dedication, and that's one of the things that we try to help them with, and that's part of the decision-making that we have in the program administration before we tell the students that they're clear to begin the flight training.
And we give every student that applies, that's on that waitlist, that is waiting to come, all of them have the same opportunity, you go over the same information with each of them?
Same information, yes. We're very transparent. One of the most important things, and I was a student as well in the program at some point, and I think the, the biggest, and one of the items that I've struggled when I was in that position was to know all the expenses, like to see the big picture, the dorm, the flight fees, the potential, if you needed more training time on the, on the specific course, and we provide all that information because we want the students to make sure that they understand the whole picture and not just the fees and not everything else that is included or is required.
Anyone else?
So again, about how many total students are out there in those different categories?
In the category of waiting list?
Yes.
Oh, uh, right now, we have 30 students in that, yes.
If I remember from the briefing last week, these fee increases also allow you to put on a, you know, the mechanic?
Yes.
And that's one, one of our problems is keeping mechanics on board and keeping the maintenance up, so this, this will improve that situation.
Yeah, all of that is, is part of the big picture, and that's what we're trying to, like, start supporting the different projects, and obviously, flight fees was one of them to support those projects.
Other questions? Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been approved in the second, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 10, Mr. Harmson. Tuition rate increases.
Number nine.
Is it nine? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Good afternoon. We, I had provided a read-ahead for the, for the last board workshop, and then at the last board workshop, we talked about the tuition and differential tuition rate adjustments. So with that, I'm not going to provide any additional information, I can certainly answer questions. The recommendation is to move to an in-district rate of 125 per semester credit hour, out-of-district tuition rate of 163 per semester credit hour, and that would be effective for the fall of 2425.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we tabled this item until we can get refinement on what the cost offsets are gonna be.
It's my understanding the policy requires a specific table until our table date. Do you have that in your motion?
Till the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Next board meeting.
I have a question.
All right, we have second now, okay, question, nurse?
Question, by delaying this, does it affect any, any red posting or anything that we have to do?
So there are a couple things that are currently in the works that it will potentially cause a few delays, I don't, you know, we may be able to work around it. The first is the course catalog, we're trying to go ahead and finalize that, but by the end of this month, along with that, our accounts receivable team has to build out the rate tables, and so that does take some time for us to go ahead and, and complete that process. We also need to make sure that we provide notification to the military for any of the required contracts, and then we're in the middle of the budget process, so having, you know, the tuition revenue will certainly aid us in helping us to, to work on the budget and complete that process.
My, 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 my specific question is, delaying doing this today, would that change our, the, will it, will it delay putting out the necessary student handbooks and things like that?
So it'll, it'll significantly compress the time that we have to complete that, especially if there are errors or, you know, anything else that we need to?
Before, before we deal with the rest of the what-ifs, the question really before us right now is a motion to table. So we need to vote on the motion to table first before we have more discussion about. If, if the motion to table passes, then we don't, we'll have to ask ourselves a question, do we want more instruction or, or information?
But, Mr. Chairman, the, what, we need to know if there's any consequences to tabling today, because if there, if there are penalties or consequences, it would affect our vote. That's why I rec, I wanna hear the clarification about that.
Rest of the board, okay, we continue the conversation?
Registration starts June 3rd, so that gives you a, a big picture of what will happen if we don't move forward and, and if this, this gets tabled and then it's voted to change, because we cannot move forward with our catalog, we can't move forward with any of the processes that it will take to establish, get established for the June 3rd registration. We can do it, it will be, it would be very difficult for our team to get the catalog out and get everything done, as, as Mr. Harmson mentioned, but it's, it's, it's not preferred, put it that way. It's, it'd cause a lot of issues.
But we will still be able to get the information that Mr. Weaver's requesting next week, if, I mean, later on, if, if it's approved today, we can still get that information.
If it's approved today?
We can still get that information, how, that he needs.
Sure, I, I mean, I mean, whatever information that the board is requiring, I mean, we can certainly gather and, and present.
That's, that's...
Rex, my question for you is, what, can you be specific about what you want to get information about before we proceed with this?
Well, the problem I've got right now is we're at that point where our revenues and our expenses have crossed, and we're spending more than we're taking in. In order to solve that, in most businesses, you have some kind of a plan, you do something. You cut expenses, you cut personnel, you cut services, you have to do something to put it in balance. And we had the briefing last week, and I didn't see anything in there that addressed what we're gonna do to adjust this. I've read it three times, and I'm not satisfied in my own heart of hearts that we're doing the best thing for the college to put out a budget that's gonna be a deficit budget. I don't know any way you can do it right now unless we got a plan. We've all heard about, you know, austerity and what the college is doing to cut expenses, and the college has done magnificent in doing that, and all of a sudden, it wasn't enough. So we've got to go a step further. What, what do we do to put us back on the footing that we're not a deficit? That's my, that's my big concern.
My, my observation of your concern is it really is a budget question that you're dealing with, not this particular item. This particular item, pass or fail, is not gonna really address, unless you're, unless, under, the reason why I'm asking that question, unless your underlying question is you want these numbers to increase to make a difference in the income aspect. If that's, if that's your rationale, then, I mean, I'm just asking for clarification.
Well, there's two things we can do. We can increase tuition, we can increase taxes, that's, that's our revenue. That's what we can do. Cut expenses, we can fire people, we can close programs, we can sell airplanes, I mean, we can do those things, but we, we're at a crossroads right now. What are we gonna do? What is our future look like and how are we gonna get there? Just by raising tuition doesn't answer the problem, in my mind. I may be wrong. Tell me where I'm wrong.
I think your point is well made, I think it's a budget question rather than this particular item. Any other discussion?
And, and you know, we're, we're, we're expected to vote on this today, and a week ago, we had a discussion on it, but, well, put it, okay, the first time we found out about this was right before spring break started, and everybody left, and then we came and did workshop, and I said the things I did during work, I said during workshop, but we're expected to vote on this, and there's no explanation. I mean, there's a little bit, but not the, what are we doing with this $20 a credit hour increase on the students that go to school here? And there needs to be some type of justification on there for us to satisfactorily, satisfactorily just vote on it, because, you know, if I was going to school here and you raised my tuition $20 an hour, that's $60 a class, and I would like to know why my tuition went up $60 a class to go to school here. And this is a really good, a really, really good college, very good community college, but I would like, it's, it's like I went and talked to academic officers, and why'd you raise my tuition so high? Last, last year, I went for 105 an hour, and this year, it's 125 an hour. I'd like to know why. And I've, and I, and you know, I've had, some of my kids, all three of my kids took college courses here, I know they'd be asking the same question, they're grown adults, and every one of us got kids that probably got, gone here at one time of another, and they'd, hopefully, they'd be asking the same question, regardless if they received financial aid or not.
Mr. Chairman, I, the reason, I mean, the tuition increase does not, I don't feel that it eliminates the responsibility of the administration took it, to, to look at ways to cut back on expenses. I see them together but separate. If this was approved today, or if I vote to approve it today, I'm still looking for bright ideas about where we cut and what we need to do to achieve a balanced budget. Does that make sense?
Amen.
So I don't, I, I guess you know probably how I'm gonna go, but I see them as two separate, separate but together. They complement each other, but I don't envision you being able to, with the tuition, the only option is to go even higher, because you certainly don't wanna do less, you'll be, we'd be further in the hole at that point, so...
Any other questions about the, the item? Now, let's go back to the motion and second of whether to table this item until the April board meeting. If you favor the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
If you do not favor the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
I, I, I don't have a clear definition, so I guess we need a show of hands.
Please.
So if you favor the motion to table, please raise your hand. Now, see, three? Thank you. If you do not favor the motion to table, please raise your hand.
Three.
Okay. We have six people.
The hungers.
The motion to table fails.
No, you can't vote.
I did. Yeah, what do you mean, I can't vote?
You can't even vote if it's a tie. Read your bylaws.
Let's, let's ask the lawyer to clarify.
I believe the chair does vote.
Yes.
But when it, when a motion ties, it fails.
Yeah. That's, both of those things are true. I think you need to read the bylaws.
I did read the bylaws, and it says the chairman only votes to break a tie.
That is a common concept among many organizations. But I guess we can have a motion to table the question until we resolve that.
I, I'm happy to look at it, but I believe...
Everybody peaceful and patient enough to let her look at the sure balance.
So, Mr. Chairman?
You just stay right there.
No, no, I, I was, I was actually going to see if I could, you know, continue to make a few comments that I, I don't know if it would address...
We have a pause, go ahead.
Okay. So, in, in the read-ahead information that I had provided, certainly I tried to identify the revenues, the expenses, and where we wanna go ahead and reinvest. I did not go into detail around each of those items, knowing that we were in the middle of the budget process and we would be coming back. We have to absolutely look at where we can go ahead and look at generating revenue, what we can do to control expenses, and then how we're going to take those dollars and reinvest them into new programs, into new facilities. What I, what I can say is that we have been, we have been utilizing six to eight million dollars... million dollars per fiscal year from reserves to offset the general expenses. A lot of that was us coming out of COVID and there's probably some very good reasons. As I had mentioned before, we did a very good job of looking at reducing expenses. The bulk of our revenue comes from tuition and, um, we don't have fees, but, but, well, the, the bulk of it though comes from tuition and then yes, we will end up seeing dollars from taxes. We have to look at, you know, everywhere we can potentially generate revenue, but what we'll end up suffering is we will either continue to pull money from reserves or we will end up making substantial other cuts as you had brought up in programs, um, in, in other ways that are going to have, certainly we need to review, but we will end up getting into a position where we will actually have no choice. In order for us to go ahead, as an example, we're looking at how can we go ahead and retain students, which is a way that we get reimbursed, um, uh, through the state. We're in a position where it's either borrowing money from reserves or we're looking at making other substantial cuts, which, you know, are becoming extremely painful. Doesn't mean we can't go ahead and do that, which includes, um, you know, looking at our human capital component. And that, that is a, it's a tough situation when you have no dollars to be able to reinvest in some of the programs to be able to continue to grow it. Otherwise I will, you know, as we, I mean, the only way of bringing in additional revenue is to, is to potentially grow some programs and I would be coming back to the board asking for dollars that would be pulled from reserves to go ahead and look at funding some of those additional programs. Um, I don't know that that is necessarily the, the, the best way to go ahead and do it, you know, having a little bit of flexibility, I think is certainly preferred. And I think unfortunately, I think that's what will continue to happen unless we're able to really look at the revenue side. I can, I can tell you, we will absolutely be looking at the expense side and you can't have one without the other. But I think if we were to go ahead and, you know, tour, and this was a conversation with Doc Carter, if we look at touring the buildings and we see the, um, some of, and I, and I, you know, in facilities and construction, and certainly we do the best that we can of going ahead and maintaining, but I can tell you, some of the, um, some of the classrooms, uh, some of the technology we have, students are coming out of KISD, um, coming from nicer facilities than what we can offer them. And, um, that doesn't feel real good, knowing that, you know, a student is potentially in a situation where they're taking a step back, you know, um, and, and I think, you know, we want to make sure that the student experience is the best it can be, but I'm just laying out there, if we don't look at the revenue side along with the expense side, um, it's going to be difficulties going forward, especially as, you know, the mandates with the state continue to come, um, you know, there are several million dollars that, um, you know, we're unable to get from property taxes just because of, you know, the support of our, of our veterans and stuff. Um, there are a number of other, Hazelwood is, is another one where, you know, it's roughly $500,000 fast, you know, we are getting into FAST, um, and, you know, there will initially be a negative impact to FAST, but ultimately it's going to benefit, you know, the, the students, um, within the Killeen Cove and throughout the service area, as well as I think over time, if we can continue to reinvest dollars into some of the programs, we can get some additional growth, um, which could, which will, you know, bring in additional revenue going forward. So it's, I, I guess in my mind, it's, it becomes a timing if we go ahead and say, no, we're, we're unwilling to go ahead and, and do this at this time. I, I think it becomes a concern of at what point are we able to go ahead and catch up to where it is that we need to be, because otherwise we potentially, you know, risk the, you know, falling behind some, you know, programs and where we need to go.
Ms. Briggs.
It doesn't say in the, in 104, under the chair section, that, if that's the section you were, the board document you were referring to, I don't see that they only wrote a tie. If, if there is somewhere specific that you read that, I'm happy to look at it, but I don't, I don't see it in 104, under the chair of the Board of Trustees.
Having heard that response from our attorney, then I declare that there was a tie and a tie means that the motion fails to table. Now we're back to the motion before us of approving item nine. Is there a motion to approve?
So who?
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Any discussion more about the motion?
Yes.
Right.
We, we keep bringing up the discussion about funding for our schools and stuff. You know, we had, I'll go back to the agreement we made a couple of years ago. We had a schedule where it says FY '25, it would go to 110, from 105 to 110. Okay? We should abide by that schedule that we, that we comprised and voted on, right?
You have things that don't look right.
But, oh, okay. Um, speaking in Texan, okay?
Yeah, I understand.
And it's part of some bad, some, some bad grammar there too, you have an understanding.
Objection to the motion.
I do object to it. I mean, I can't advertise exactly how I will vote because you can't do that. I can't say I'm gonna vote yea or nay, but I can't say, I cannot support raising the tuition that much in, between one fiscal year to another fiscal year.
legislation.
Okay? I like, I agree with the schedule we previously have that we, that, that's been out there, but going from 105 to 125, I cannot support.
Your objection is noted. Anybody else, questions?
When we voted on that, the right, uh, the list that you're talking about, things were not as they are today. That was some time ago, that we, we have some things that are facing us now that, um, the majority of our, you know the percentage of our students that will be affected by the $55 and all that if that's implemented for the House Bill 8, you know?
What percentage of the students?
No, just, you don't have to have it right there in front of you, but wouldn't the majority of our students be affected by that?
Um, the dual credit students would, would end up having the opportunity to go ahead and take advantage of that, yes. And then as I mentioned before, that we had roughly, I think, um, 50% of our students are, um, 58% are, are receiving some type of, uh, military benefit and then 45% are receiving some type of financial aid.
Finances change. How much publicity? Did we publicize a list of progress, list of, um, tuition increases to the public? I mean, did we put that in the college catalog or did we?
So the, the, um...
You weren't even in that position.
Well, it would, it would, um, get published just the next year's in the course catalog.
Just what the tuition is for that time?
Yes, I, unless I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding, but no, it's just whatever, whatever the, that period of time is.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't publish it.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Well, and in part because when that schedule was presented to the board, uh, a couple of years ago before House Bill 8 was even passed and some other things have happened and costs have escalated, the discussion was with the, and the approval was with the understanding that if we needed to increase it, we would. If we could, if we could afford to, to just toe the line and, and not increase it, we would. But the flexibility that the board allowed us was to go in either direction. So it was a proposed schedule and in the event we chose to, in the event we chose to go with the proposed rate in the schedule for the applicable fiscal year, then we wouldn't need to come back to you. So that's why we're here, because we believe that in light of recent events, that we need to do this.
And, and just to give you one example, if you remember back in, I think it was the September board workshop, um, we had to go ahead and move dollars, which ultimately would have come from reserves, um, and almost a million dollars just to cover our insurance. So that's how much that the, and, you know, we all know probably from what we're paying from our, you know, our home insurance, automobile insurance, that, that's one example. I have, we're, we're coming up to the renewal period where we will be going back out, looking at what those, uh, rates are. Um, I am anticipating, while I don't know exactly what that's going to be, um, that we're gonna see an additional increase in that. So there are a number of things like that that are truly catching up that I don't think were anticipated at that, at that point in time.
So what would, see, that was why we were trying to get it tabled, uh, and now we're in full fledged discussion about this. So what would be the difference between 110 a semester hour, 125 a semester hour in terms of what you need it for?
Um, I, I, I can't, I don't, I don't...
If we're able to do a compare and contrast, we need to be able to, be able to discuss this. If we don't have the information in front of us, how are we gonna make an educated decision?
So...
I think the question is, is, is basically a 10% reduction in what you're asking for.
So here, let me, I guess, let me go ahead and, I don't know that I can specifically go ahead and say, here's what we will get if we go to a $5 an increase as opposed to a $20 an increase. What I can tell you is that we are significantly behind the market in overall salaries and wages and Holly is going to probably come up behind me and hit me or whatever.
So, why, why?
So, so, the, 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 the amount just, I think for, and she can correct me, for a two and a half percent increase is, is like 2.5 million dollars. We are losing staff, staff are retiring and unable to go ahead and replace them because of where we're at in the market. All of this, when we look at the overall expense piece, and if you were to go ahead and say, okay, where are you gonna go ahead and look at spending on? I would love to go ahead and look at passing on, you know, a, a pay increase. We can't hire staff assistants because they can go anywhere else in the city, you can go to In-N-Out Burger and make substantially more than what we're able to go ahead and do. This, this isn't going to get necessarily solved overnight, but if we don't take incremental steps to try to at least close that gap, um, we are going to be farther and farther behind. At some point you can continue to cut, but then at that, at some point it's, we are now impacting our services to our students in such a way that they are frustrated and then it starts to compound where then they say, we are not going to CTC because they just don't have the support to be able to support me as a, as a student. And it becomes, you know, a little difficult when you're saying, hey, I want to go ahead and put in a software package that I think will improve efficiency, but I can't buy that software package unless I eliminate five positions. And we're getting to that position where I'm either coming to you to say, we're gonna borrow from reserves, we're gonna look at positions, or we're going to look at taxes, tuition that we can use to reinvest in programs. You know, when we have industry coming in, we're trying to go in and position ourselves so that we can go ahead and say, you know, semiconductor training site, you know what? We, we are wanting to put that on this campus. What can we do? Well, I gotta build that out, we gotta buy some equipment, we've got to go ahead and get the space prepared or ready. So at this point, I would be coming back to the board and say, is the board going to go ahead with, with, you know, is that something that the board would approve or I have to go ahead and pass? And then that goes somewhere else, which, I mean, they haven't decided where they're gonna put it, but it's those kinds of opportunities that are gonna pass us by and then you're going to go ahead and look at myself and, and others and say, okay, so why didn't we take advantage of these opportunities? And so I guess what, you know, what I'm explaining is it gives us some added flexibility. It's not the whole piece, it's just a piece of the pie. We still have to go ahead and look at all revenues and I think we do need to, to General Weaver's point, we absolutely have to continue to look at expenses because all, ultimately we want to be able to reinvest in our students and the programs that we have. Things are changing, things are very different now after COVID. We need the flexibility, we need to be able to move quickly. And there will be a number of conversations that we will continue to have between now as well as the end of the fiscal year, you know, as, as we move forward.
Well, one more.
I just wanted to add to Mr. Harmson's discussion, so, um, I know the discussion is about, you know, what is the plan and where are we trying to go, go there? And I know our Carter intends to, for us to have that discussion, um, hopefully very soon. However, we have been evaluating this. We, we actually looked at historical financials and started trending it. Our operating expenses have been cut more than 50% over a several year period. Mr. Liberty, if you recall, kind of member down memory lane, he talked about what happens if we keep cutting and cutting and cutting and we kinda used the word, you know, amputation? Well, we're, we're pretty close to being, you know, deceased now. I mean, this is where we're at, we're at that crossroads. And so the, the circumstances is that we've been holding the line and, and if you look at us and you looked at how we trended, right, we've had a number of, of things that have inflicted pain on us and it's because of our, um, our, our military side, how closely aligned we are. And that has nothing to do with anything other than that, you know, that is our, our population. Um, we are here in Fort Cabasos, we were around the world, so when sequestration, sequestration happened, when the changing into TA happened, then we've had recently unfunded, um, some unfunded mandates with HBA, the change in property taxes that disproportionately affects the college. This is all trended down in how we're affected from not only our enrollment perspective, but the revenue that we have. As a result, COVID just kinda came out of nowhere and just took the floor out from everything. But in that time, the college held the line, but we kept reducing our expenses. We renegotiated contracts and created major savings where there was opportunities wouldn't have existed, but we leveraged that to do those things. However, we're at a boiling point now where the HBA piece, which is essentially an unfunded mandate, it's cutting our tuition with a critical constituency that is pretty large and our dual credit has taken away revenue that was initially forecasted for years to come. So when the financial picture was given to you back when we were doing the rates that Dr. Carter had, had just discussed for years out, some of that that Mr. Liberty did was forecasted on the idea that not only would we see growth in the dual credit market, but that our rate would consistently grow. And then all of a sudden HBA passes and if you consider what we were hanging our hat on in the future was just overnight cut in half. And there is more to it, you know, as we've modeled it and looked at it, the free and reduced lunch population, while it's fantastic and, and I think this is one of the best things to help our students, especially our young ones that are, that don't have the, the money and the capacity to get into dual credit, it is unfortunately gonna inflict some injury to the college because if that population grows, well now that's a larger population that we are not receiving dollars to necessarily fund for education. And so the college is now burdened and bootstrapped with how we figure out how to cover that. And so I think to your points, sir, um, so we've been looking at the historical, we've been looking at everything, we've been, Mr. Barton, all of it, we've been trying to kick the tires to figure out where do we go? The issue that we have today is that industry is growing rapidly, emerging industry and while this may not be the time...
Go ahead. We've had the discussion, go ahead.
So we've been having a lot of discussions with industry. Um, in my other title, which is Chief of Strategy, um, I, Mr. Harmson and anyone else we could drag with us, have been speaking with industry quite frequently now and they're coming to us. They're looking to see what can we provide? That's the rocket industry, which I was sharing videos today. Um, I probably didn't go in, in depth to say the discussions that we've been having with them. That's the semiconductor industry that wants to come and would like to set up a program that's going to serve Fort Cabasos and they want a regional training center. We've also talked to defense contractors that are looking for certain types of, um, systems engineers and they're looking to see what can we provide? Some of the issues that, in doing a great job in toeing the line and trying to, um, prevent our spending, now we're at a time where industry's coming at us and it's not easy to build buildings, it's not easy to put up things that they're looking for, but what we know, those are the jobs for the future. For all those students that are in the ISDs right now, if we want them to stay here or within the area or we wanna fulfill that employment gap that we have, because everybody talks about it, that we're a, a tech desert, right? Well, we don't have, um, the qualified employees. I can tell you right now that if you go south to, um, Williamson County, 58,000 tech jobs. If you go north to McLennan, roughly about 6,000 between them and a part of Belton, which would be Temple here. Here substantially lower. I mean, it's so low that, I mean, it's about a thousand jobs. Right? And most of that is on the defense side with Cavasos. So if, if we don't start building it here and now they're migrating up, um, we're, we're gonna have real issues. And you ask, okay, well, how does that relate to the tuition component? It is one of the few levers that we have left to pull. It is that and some of the others that you've discussed so that we can meet the immediate demand of what we're being asked for in industry that will hopefully trigger the sustainment that we need so that we're not having to do this over and over and over again, because I, I don't believe that's the objective. I know it's not.
Thank you, gentlemen. As, uh, chair, I've heard, uh, discussion on this is not enough and, or this is too much and this is a budget item. Are going to be a budget issue. And that really to me, and my own personal feeling is our discussion has been very healthy and very adequate in that we do have an issue that we need to look more futuristic about how we do business. So I believe it's time for us to call for the question on the motion, which is to, uh, change the, the in district tuition rate and the out of district tuition rate. Uh, we've had a motion, a second. Is there, if you're in favor of that, you say aye. If you say you're not in favor of that, you say no.
No.
I think again, we'll have to vote by hand. If you're in favor, if you favor the motion, uh, item nine, uh, change of the in district tuition rate to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, out of district tuition rate a hundred and sixty-three dollars. If you favor that motion, you raise your right hand, please, or either hand. I see three. If you're opposed to that motion, you raise your hand, please. I see three. And as we've already discussed, a tie, a tie means the motion failed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harmsen.
Can you explain that, Bill?
Explain what?
His, uh, the motion that came up failed, right?
Yes. Uh, don't go away. Mark, you have another item.
You thought, you thought that was fine.
So the, uh, the second item is in regards to a differential tuition for the cyber range. So, uh, again, we, uh, had reviewed and discussed this. Um, the differential tuition would be a hundred and forty dollars per semester.
Is there a motion to support this, uh, recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion been made, a second. Any discussion? If you favor the motion, you say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, you say no. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Dr. Carter, travel schedule?
Yes, as, um, as discussed last week, I made an amendment, uh, proposed an amendment to my travel schedule based on an invitation to, uh, participate in the S A C C O C president's panel and, uh, support one of our students at a ceremony in San Antonio. And so I'm asking for your approval of that amended schedule.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is, uh, recommendation of topics for upcoming agenda items.
Twelve, twelve.
Consider approval appointment.
Number twelve, the vacancy.
Yeah, my optometrist is gonna be grateful to see me. Thank you all. Discuss and consider approval of appointment of vacancy for the board of trustees, place four. In keeping with the policy manual, it is the board's responsibility to, uh, select a, a replacement, uh, on behalf of the board, uh, uh, offer and, uh, ask for a motion to, uh, select Eric Armstrong as the next, uh, board member of place four.
Still moved?
Motion been made, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now, recommendation of topics. Can you read my own handwriting?
Well, obviously there's one that we want to discuss.
Yes, I think so.
I'd like for the administration to carve out some time at our next workshop to get down specifics on how we can move forward and do what we have to do in this college to make sure that we have income and expenses moderate each other and, uh, serve the students in the capacity which we're used to in the past. I'd, I'd like to make a positive spin on that, that we do the best we can with the circumstances and the funds we have available. And I'd like to revisit this issue of the increase in tuition.
James, if any?
I agree with you.
Ernest, anything? Ms. Colley?
Yeah.
James. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
In a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.